Okay.
And if you let me know which which song you want to perform, I can make that.
Oh, you don't want me to say?
All right. So Debbie, you want to call us to order?
Here.
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 And Joe, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Since you're so talkative this evening, you can talk a little and pledge.
All right. Do you remember it?
Are you making me do it?
Yeah, we're making you do it.
I wasn't paying that much attention.
You better hurry. Come on.
The pledge of allegiance is to secure the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, the funny thing is usually when we have somebody do the pledge of allegiance, Michelle can back this up because she usually screws it up. We can usually hear their voice. I did not hear your voice at all, Joe.
Well, that's because I screwed it up.
You just did. Yeah, you're just doing lip sync, huh?
All right. That was a nice cadence. It was good cadence, Joe. I liked it. It worked out. All right. So we'll move on to approval of minutes.
I request a motion for approval of the special meeting minutes of December 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kent Ballen?
Yes.
And?
Yes. All right. Departmental updates, chief.
Pursuant to your approval of the tax levy percentage, the millage, we are going to convene a steering committee for the police levy. And I reached out to the members off duty, of course, to organize that meeting, and that will be forthcoming in the next week or so.
Okay. So the primary purpose of that committee is to educate and provide information.
Correct. Correct.
The steering committee kind of, that's a generic, general term of.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to talk about was our shop with the police and our toy drive that we did in conjunction with the fire department. The shop with the police program, we provided a shopping spree for three individuals from our three different grade schools, as well as two additional deserving children from the community. They had a great day shopping for their families and then having a pizza party back at the station here. For our toy drive with the fire department, we collected over 500 toys for the Toys for Tots program. So it was a great event.
That's great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Chief Wright.
Just want to make you aware, I think I touched on in November, December, the Ohio Division of EMS Equipment Reimbursement Grant, you approved to purchase us some new innovation equipment. We did get the equipment. We have received the check back for thirty seven, $3,711.06. So we got that money back in. Deputy Chief Masterson got the assistance of firefighters grant application in, going for additional funding for paramedic school as well as some new fire hose. Our ESO software that was approved, we did go live with that January 1st. Still some bumps still working out, some, some bugs along the way. It's gonna take a little time to get used to. We've been doing in December did training with staff, so it's gonna be an ongoing thing, but it's up and running and operational. I didn't include our, our presence program. This year, we adopted nine kids from four different families. So ours is a little bit different than the police department. We get lists from the schools. We went at an evening to Walmart. Most of us took our kids and spouses with us. Cruised the firehouse, wrapped everything, and then cordoned with families to deliver. I think most of those gifts were delivered on Christmas Day. So we provided the gifts and we got each of the families a gift card to Kroger. So we didn't, didn't take pictures since it was Christmas Day, but that is our update on the program. This is our 11th year doing it, which is awesome.
That's great. Well, thank you, Chief Wright. I was fully anticipating you to say how that was better than the fire department or the police department, but moving on to John. John, what do you have in your service department?
The cemetery wall has been completed. The rebuilding it will be submitted for reimbursement. We may have gotten it already. I'm not sure how it's been around much. We took, we got, we finally finished up just right before this, got all the cul-de-sacs cleaned out. So everything's good until Friday.
You guys have done a hell of a job. Really nice job.
Thank you. It's been a lot of hours, a lot of hours.
Remind me, what have you been doing? He's like, he's gonna throw something at me.
No.
So just.
I'm glad I moved one more away.
It's been a rough four days or whatever.
I can tell.
So.
After your report, you can go and go back to that.
I gotta take Debbie home.
Oh, no.
I had to walk the other yesterday. I walked up here because my, I couldn't, I got my car stuck in my driveway and then I, so I walked. And I come, and it's, and I came up the road and I walked and then Craig and Jim and Mike, they got upset with me that I walked, but, and then I walked home. That day two, got my car unstuck, got Dennis's truck cleaned off. So, because it's four wheel drive. So I did that and then I go out this morning to get in the truck. The doors were frozen shut. So I called Craig, help, and I've been here all day.
Yeah, you didn't ride your bike.
Yep.
We did have two trucks break down over the sequence of the storm. So we, one guy, well Jake worked on those today to try to get them back up and going. I think he's got it fixed, so.
Man, those eyes look like just two burned out holes, man. That's just awful.
Thank you, guys. I, I, I did travel a little bit in, in the snow up, up to our shop and Beach Miami and there further up and back and a couple of different side roads and stuff. Honestly, Bradbury was the most clear road that I traveled. I mean, you guys did a great job with all the roads. I'm just saying, out of all the state and county and every road that I, that I traveled on, that was the most clear. So you guys just generally did an outstanding job. You did a great job at the other roads that I, you know, traveled on around my house and stuff, so.
We, we focus on those, you know, kind of what I consider are a little bit higher speed roads and the ones with the hills. And then because they got to be able to get to where they need to go. And so I wanted to get there safe. And so we, we pretty much keep those, try to keep them blocked throughout the storm so that we don't have any issue with it.
I think even to that point, we had a wreck on Red, maybe Sunday, I know probably. And they stopped what they were doing when we called to bring trucks down long at the road closed, just to, to put a lot of salt down, just to make sure that it was safe. So in all the craziness that they had going on, they still prioritized what we needed over what they had motioned.
That's great.
Pulled a lot of trucks out of the dishes too.
Yeah.
Hard to find roads.
I was giving John credit on Bradbury and then you said there's a wreck. I mean, come on, Craig. Moving on, parks and green space, dog.
Good evening. Just some updates, park events. So we're hot and heavy on the, the planning events. We had our meeting last night. Eddie, Dan New Year sent you contracts for Fun Flips. They're the, the ride, the projection and screen, you know, for those movies. So do you kind of have a short list of movies selected for the month to have those selected by the end of January? Concerts, two concerts for targeting, having those selected at our February meeting so that we can go ahead and get those booked. Easter egg hunt is the first event. It's April 12th. So in the planning stages of that, I think we're in pretty decent shape and talking through that. Let's see, park improvements. So we've got some bonds in, in the park improvement account. And one of the items that, that we need to do, we need to replace the bulletin board at Lucas Corner Park. Just the, the door is getting pretty rickety. So looking at that, and then also we want to put one at Grove Park and Spencer Shank Park. What we're looking at is about 1,500 bucks each. But we'll get that and we've worked with John and the service department to get a quote perhaps for, for the February trustee meeting. But we thought we'd use, you know, that park improvement fund to go ahead and fund those. Another improvement that we want to look at is there's been some requests in the community about that we replaced all the fencing at the tennis courts. And the, the backboard was kind of falling apart, the practice backstop. So the request has been to replace that. So just doing some research, it's in the three to five K range. We would have the money in the, in the parks, wanted to cover the bulletin boards and that. But we may hold on the tennis court to, because that may be a good opportunity for the Claremont County Parks grant opportunity. Should come out in probably April, May timeframe. So we'll, we'll kind of look at that to, to fund that that way. That's all I've got for the time.
Thanks, Doug. All right. Administration and planning, Eddie.
Right up. So we, we, we were receiving a couple of inquiries regarding energy aggregation. Our provider supplier switched to Dyna G. And so there were a number of letters sent out that are statutory. Led to a few questions. So we've had conversations back and forth with Mr. Garrett, who is here tonight. Figured it would be a good opportunity just to provide a little bit of an update, just so that the public understands exactly what all is going on, if there aren't any major structural changes and all those, and all those sorts of things. So the other item we have is the lighting petitions. Carl and I have been working on the lighting petition process. The step that we're in right now is working with Duke Energy to determine what those costs would be and to generally scope out how the whole process would flow to make sure that the actual neighborhood is, is sized properly and meets the ORC standards, that sort of thing. And the other item is American Tower. If you recall, we had received a couple of inquiries from American Tower. They were looking to renegotiate a couple of items. Carl did some research on that. There's a memo in your packets regarding kind of pros and cons and that sort of thing. As far as them adjusting their, their annual rate and whether it makes sense or not. I don't know if you want to chat about it, just briefly.
Yeah. So the way that the, the current lease is set up is that there is a 3% annual escalation. And basically, American Tower Corporation is looking to increase or decrease, excuse me, decrease that escalation. They've requested a 2%, which is kind of what if we were looking for that lease now and setting it up now, that's what it would be. That's kind of the standard, 3% was the standard. And this is kind of happening all over the place where these companies are coming back and asking to renegotiate their leases. And they're citing long-term sustainability as the reason for it. So the, the two options obviously represent losses for the township. The one lump sum is an offer of $260,000 as opposed to that 2% rate. So they would just pay a lump sum of $260,000 and that would be a loss of almost $2 million. Because the, the, the life of the lease total value right now is 2.1 million dollars, almost 2.2. If we decrease to 2%, we would lose about a half a million, about $448,000. So again, they're, they're pushing for this, trying to say that they can sustain these payments moving forward. And the other point in our lease is that they can opt out at certain points. One of those points is next year. Something to keep in mind as they present these options. So.
Opt out, meaning what exactly?
They can end the lease.
Just terminate it.
Correct. If it's such a money loser for them, they can hop right out next year.
Yep. Yeah. So, and you know, if you, if you, obviously there's a third option, which is, ah, we're good. And, and potentially, you know, they may continue beyond 2026 and they would be able to opt out again five years later. Those opt out periods are every five years until 2066. So.
Out of curiosity, what happens in 2066?
That's just the end of the lease.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I assume by then, maybe it'll be obsolete by then, you know?
Right. Good point.
Yeah. Thanks. Any other questions?
So, so essentially we're at an opt out moment.
Pretty much.
So we don't really have to make a decision tonight or
No.
even in the next six months.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that. Yeah, there is no timeframe. You know, it's not like this is, has a deadline on it or anything like that, other than the fact that 2026 is a, is the deadline or would be an opt out point for them. So that's the only thing to keep in mind.
I feel like worrying about that in 2026.
Fair enough. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Yeah, this is made this evening, right?
No, not at all.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay.
I would like to hop real quick back to the lighting, not for you, Carl, sorry. The lighting petitions at Sedona Ridge. I mean, we've been moving around on this for quite some time. And really, at the end of the day, now it's becoming, and my assessment is sort of similar to something like an HOA where you can't change something after people move in. So let's just say I sign up for an HOA under a certain premise, right? And I move into a neighborhood and I assume that these are the costs of the neighborhood and these are the fees I've signed up for. You move in and that's what you expect. And then that those get changed. So you can't easily, for instance, you can't change it. You can't bring an HOA into a community that doesn't have one without essentially 100% approval of the community. Because for obvious reasons, there would be certain people that would have assessments made upon them in which they were not preppy to when they bought the home or when they moved in in the neighborhood. So I feel like this is perhaps one of those scenarios where it's gone on a while. Townships aren't typically responsible for, for, for lighting districts. In fact, never, as far as I know. And in order to do this at this point, we would have to go back and assess costs on people that didn't expect those costs. So if, what I'm trying to say is if we were to go all the way through to approve the lighting assessment for this neighborhood in order to pay for the lights that are going to need to be turned on in this neighborhood, then we would have to assess each owner of each parcel and neighborhood, each, each piece of property an assessment, and they would have to pay a certain amount per month to the township in order to have their lights on, similar to how Legendary Run operates currently. And there are many people now have bought homes in that neighborhood that did not anticipate that additional cost. So is that necessarily even fair at this point to try to assess that additional cost on someone who's moved into a neighborhood and didn't agree upon that, that additional cost? Is that even, is that even a fair premise in order for us to move forward upon?
Well, it wouldn't be a fair premise if there weren't an election attached to the backend of that petition. So if that person in that neighborhood does not want the electrification, you know, they don't want the lights, they can always vote it down. So all this petition does is it comes to, as I understand it, it comes to us to consider it. If 51 or 51% or more of the residents wish to put this on a ballot and, and consider it, then it goes to the ballot. And then they vote for it. So in that case, everybody inside that HOA theoretically Okay. would have that opportunity to say no.
I wasn't aware the last part that it goes to the ballot to consider it. So it would actually go on the ballot at the very last.
All we would do is vote yes to put it on the ballot, correct?
Basically, they need to meet a threshold in order for it to even become an item of consideration. And it would have to cross the fifth, I believe it's 51%.
Right.
To, to come to the board.
Yes, but that board.
And then I wasn't aware of the next step that then we can put it on the ballot.
Yes. Our, what, all we do is have a public hearing.
I don't know about.
I believe it's a public hearing, but I would defer to legal counsel on some of the nuances of.
She's looking it up. She's got the Ohio Revise Code right there.
Are we, has there been a substantial, a substantial change in the level of interest that you're seeing?
I wouldn't say substantial, but we did receive a brand new batch of letters that, that piqued everyone's interest. Because we had, we had, we were really kind of stuck at a number for quite some time, for a couple of years. And then a cluster toward the south portion of Sedona Ridge kind of got together, it looked like, and sent a bunch of letters in. But again, there wasn't a, there wasn't a parameter set for, hey, if you send them in within this period of time, kind of to what trustee Kelly was saying, where it's, the period now has gone so long where there have been a number of people who've probably moved in and out of the neighborhood. And if we set some sort of ground rules, and that's kind of what we're working on right now, is to set those basic ground rules to say, okay, you know, you have X period of time. If you don't get it within that time, then the window closes.
Well, and that's, and that's been the problem that I had because we have let the actual petition from the past still hang out there.
Right.
And so at this point, you could have had a 30% turnover. And people that live in that neighborhood, Michelle, you can probably attest to that with people moving, you know, coming into a community and out. So you're, to your point, that's where you start to get into some weirdness because to those petitions, at this point, they even, are they relevant? You know, that person now lives someplace else. And so now you're right. I mean, so what is 51% at this point? So I think working on, on a new approach is probably the better way to go if we're going to do it anything at all.
Yeah. So after the positions are submitted at the 51%, right, it goes, they have to be reviewed and certified that they are current residents. It would go then to the board for a public hearing. You then do have the power to set up a lighting district. So if you have a public hearing and the board decides to adopt a resolution creating a lighting district, that would be the end of it. The lighting district would then be created.
We could then also put it to the ballot as well.
You could, if you want to go that direction, but you also would have the power to just simply grant the resolution establishing it.
And all I'm saying is that, you know, I've been elected on behalf of the people to make what I hope are intelligent, logical decisions. And to do that upon people that have bought homes within, that's where I'm trying to explain my logic.
I get your logic.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, oh, I'm not really, I shouldn't, I, I'm not directing that necessarily at you, but just generally speaking, if, if, if this has transpired for a certain amount of time and people have bought houses within that community and that you're right, you get all that. So it just seems like at this point, and then the other thing is honestly, in the beginning of all this, essentially townships are not, have not historically paid for lighting districts. So, but I mean, what we could have done, and I wasn't a fan of this, obviously in the beginning, but we could have just said, we're not paying for it, moved on. But we went through all these additional steps and, and we tried to help with, you know, facilitating this process to get feedback from the residents and to do this whole petition thing, which was actually above and beyond really what we
True, yeah.
are sort of, I, I, I don't want to, you know, this to come off in a bad way, but what we were kind of required to do as a township, we sort of went above and beyond and get everybody's feedback. And try to figure out what, what was the best approach in order to get that in front of us for the ballot.
Well, and to, and to illustrate your point, you know, it is kind of the tale of two cities or at least a village that decided not to be one. On our side of the, the road, we spent a lot of time, as you said, trying to rectify the situation. But on the other side of the road, Batavia Township didn't do anything and the lights went out. And so there's not a lot of consideration or a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of review or, or concern about that. We just went back to the law. So I mean, that's something, that's a direction we can go as well. I appreciate the fact that we're looking into it, trying to solve it. From my perspective, I think those, the previous batch of petitions probably needs to, we need to scrap all those and start fresh. If we're going to do it at all. But I don't think that's what you're, you're asking us tonight, right?
Yeah, there's no, no action necessary. What we intend on doing is having this meeting with Duke Energy to figure out exactly what those costs might look like, because the next step would be, we'd bring it to you guys and say, hey, we're moving forward unless there's a major objection. And then we would launch the process, which would entail us sending direct mailers to the affected property owners.
My preference would be not to continue to just kick the can down the road in a typical political fashion, but own your decisions. And if we're not going to pay for this lighting district, then don't pay for it. Be honest with people, be upfront with them. Tell them we're not going to pay for the lighting district because that's not typically what townships do. And move on instead of continuing to send staff time and resources and all the stuff we need to spend to continue to gather information. I'm fine with that. I'm okay with it. But it needs to have an end. It needs to have some sort of you know, some sort of horizon in which we make a decision on what we're going to do. I, I, I have another analogy, but I don't know if it's appropriate.
I hope, go ahead. I want to hear it. You start, I gotta hear it.
It has to do with the toilet.
Oh, my God. Now I really have to hear it.
We're not going to do it. But I do think, I think as elected officials, we have some sort of responsibility to be efficient in what the jobs that we do. And this is not efficient. This is just continually cancaking is what we're doing with this, sort of. I don't think we're doing it on purpose. I'm not directing this at anybody in particular. But I do think that we should make a decision on what we're going to do with this lighting district and move on.
Totally agree. But I would, I would only correct you on one regard, in one regard, we're not paying for it. That's just a fact. We're not paying for it. If it gets paid for, it gets paid for by the residents of Sedona Ridge or whatever neighborhood wants their lighting district. This is their responsibility. Ultimately, it's, it's their, it's their project.
We have to do all the work.
Right.
If, if there is a petition with 51%, you know, then we do have to follow the statutory process. And then the lighting district would then be paid by the tax assessments that are made by residents.
And I think we're, we're, we actually have complete agreement as one, we're not paying for it. Flat out, we don't have the legal authority to do it and we're not going to do it. And the second thing is, is that this really has to be a community-driven, community-based effort, which doesn't have to be required. Like, I mean, Loretta did a hell of a lot of job, a lot of work on this and it was fine that she did all that. But from here on out, I think it has to be community-driven and grassroots from the ground up. I mean, this is, if you want lights, this is how you get them. You know, this is, there is a mechanism that can be utilized. Community can step in. People can go around and circulate petitions. We'll accept it. We will work, you know? We're not going to block it.
Accepting the petitions because you've had, this has been going on.
For years.
Yeah, since Loretta was here.
Right, so.
And we've never made the 51% now.
We've always been at 20, what, 30, about 35% was, I think, the high.
Mechanically, like from a staff hours perspective, I think like Loretta took the approach that, okay, staff will put the mailers together and send them out. I don't believe that that's actually delineated as like a statutory requirement or anything. I think that we were just trying to make it as easy as possible. So but, but we'll yield to whatever this board desires. Like if, if, if that is something as simple as put a blast out on the website, Facebook, things like that to say, here, you know, set some basic parameters, I mean.
I think that where I would be very comfortable is to send, send out a, a direct, or a something on Facebook. I know it's always a hot topic, Michelle, right? On Facebook about the lights. Okay, well, put out the process on Facebook, show them how it's, tell them how it's done and then let them do it, right? What do you think, Michelle? I mean, you're from the neighborhood. I mean, are you okay? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
Of course, you're always welcome. Come up and speak your mind.
So when we, when I moved into the village, I moved into a village with a lighting district. It dissolved. What was I going to do? I mean, it is, it is what it is. You, we had to cut the head off the snake to stop the snake. But I was never told how much it was going to cost me per month to keep those lights on. Petitions were sent out. I sent mine in. I'm sorry that other people didn't send theirs in. I did what I was asked to do. But I never got a dollar amount. What's it going to cost me per month to keep it?
I thought we did that.
It is. It's written in the petition. It's, it was on the petition.
Okay. Do, do you, do you remember that number per month?
I don't remember that number. And I know that right now, we take it pretty seriously. That's why we're trying to
Right.
meet with Duke to get it for sure. I, I did not send those letters out, but I vaguely recall the discussions. I just don't remember what that amount was.
I, I believe on the petition and you can look it up and it's, it's on, it's on our website.
The petition was sent out many years ago.
Right. It's been a while.
Right. So I don't remember.
And that price has probably changed.
Not remembering. But in the same sense, there is a high turnover in our area. On the Batavia side, I think there are more HOAs on the Batavia side that do take care of their lights. So you don't hear as much of an uproar over there as you do over here. And I don't think anybody coming into these subdivisions are looking at them in the dark. They don't come house shopping at night. They come house shopping when it's daylight out. So they don't know those lights don't work until they go, crap, it's dark out here. After they've moved in. And then the neighbors go, oh yeah, we don't have streetlights. Well, why don't we have streetlights? So then the whole thing gets drug up. So you know, I think that I think that it's fair to go back and revisit it. Do we want to spend a lot of time and taxpayers' money on it? No, because the taxpayers aren't doing their part to send it back in and say, yes, I want lights. How do I get them? So I think we, we bear part of that burden as well, but put a date on it, an ending date, say it's, it's done. You know, we're moving on.
Yes, my view is.
We've got to get lights.
I guess my view is, why would I put a deadline on something that I didn't start? So if a community member wants to have this happen, start it, you know, start carrying the petition.
I think we potentially put a, a deadline on the township's disengagement with this situation. I mean, we are no longer going to promote. We're no longer going to visit. If there's, like you said, a grassroots effort that just flares up and they get a petition together on their own and they get all these signatures and they bring them to us.
Great. And is that?
There has to be a date where we. I'm sorry.
Is that how you start the grassroots?
Maybe.
Because I Google how, how to get my streetlights back on and I'm just going to tell me how to get my streetlights.
Well, how about we do this?
Well, probably not. No, no one Googled it.
There could be guidance, but I, I think as far, sorry to interrupt. But you know, I think to Mr. Freeman's point, you know, there was a question raised, who's paying for this? In, in a way, we kind of have been paying for some of it in terms of the staff. We, in, in a way, we kind of have been paying for some of it in terms of the staff time. And I'm not gonna ask you to regurgitate how many hours you put in or Carl or Loretta or whoever, but. And, you know, in reality, the longer this continues and the more staff time that's put into it, you know, that, we are sort of paying for part of it as a. You know, township, you know, and all taxpayers are contributing to that, right? So I favor Mr. Freeman's approach. This should be a, the neighborhood's responsibility. I think we, we've already offered to assist and guide, but at some point, I would favor a hybrid approach. Not necessarily putting an end to it, but putting an end to the township's involvement in, in terms of staff time. You know, Eddie can advise and guide the neighborhood to a website or to a lawyer. Or to whoever to take it from there and run with it should they choose to so do. But I, I do think with everything else that we're working on, for the whole of the township, you know, I would favor limiting staff investment. You know, beyond a certain point. I think we should set that date where we say, okay, this is, we've done as much as we can. Um, as a township, you know, board of, you know, as, as a township staff. And then let it go from there if this, if they want, excuse me, if the neighborhood wants it, by all means, they can petition the board conceivably at any time. In the future, five years down the road, ten years down the road. I don't know that there's a way to, there's a limit to that. It probably isn't, council, right? So, you know, that's my opinion on it.
How about we do this? We put, we say today, this is gonna be, we're gonna direct the, uh, the administrator. To put this on our agenda for our, you picked the month. And if there's nothing that gets started between now and that month, we're done. Pick the month.
Six months out, mid-year?
No.
You wanna let go that long? Sooner?
This has gone on four years.
Okay.
So.
March?
We'll put it on the, Mr. Chairman, you choose. I'm willing to do it.
I love the decision I'm being given with this, as if this is something in favor of. Uh, what, what is, nothing happens between now and then. What is, what does that really mean?
If no community, if no community member starts to pick up this torch and run with it. If no one cont- contacts Eddie, we'll put it up on, you know, here are the directions. This is how it's done.
Well, I think, I think we should be, I think we should be a little more prudent to be a little more, um, you know, uh, decisive than that. I mean, if, if a community member picks it up, well, any community.
If there's an organization, if it starts.
Any community member could just pick it up. That person could come in here and think this is important, which I know they do. I understand that. But it's a matter of if there is a fifty one percent, we've only reached twenty-five and thirty and thirty-five at most percentages votes on this thing. But they would have to be the kind of person that would then be able to, uh, you know, mobilize people in order to get that percentage up above fifty. And so you could just have one individual come in here to a trustees meeting and say, based off what you're saying, I don't, I.
You know, what we could do is we could put together like an education piece. That we blast out.
Well, maybe we should say, if we don't have a grassroots effort that produces a fifty one percent vote by a certain date. Then we're not gonna keep it. How about that?
You defined it. I'm willing to do it.
That would probably work, I, I think for.
Your definition works fine for me.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do it. In that case, though, it's a little stronger. No, not, we'll give them. In that case, if that's the definition, then six months worth.
Nine.
Yeah, well, the thing is, someone could theoretically come at month seven or eight and say, all right, we're, we're gonna do this now. And I think we have a statutory obligation to.
We do have a, we have a statutory obligation to, uh, feel that as, as a board, but we will not get involved as a township thereafter. So if that fifty one percent isn't met at six months, then as a township, we're not gonna continue to post stuff on our Facebook. We're not gonna continue to have discussions at board. We're not gonna continue to use our staff time, uh, to, to deal with this issue. We, we, there is a horizon on this. And so if we, if the, if the grassroots effort is not able to produce a fifty one percent vote in six months. Then the township will kind of back away from that, which we never had an obligation to be involved with, begin with necessarily. But I think we were all trying to, you know, kind of do our due diligence and do the right thing. And, you know, like you said, Michelle, you guys didn't sign up for the village, understanding your lights were gonna be turned off and we understood that. And so we tried to get involved, we tried to help the best we could by sending out mailers and facilitating and getting information from people. But the, the, the problem is they just have not produced anywhere close to a fifty one percent vote. So we can't, we, the, the rules are as they are. We can't work miracles. They have, there has to be fifty one percent to get in front of our board. And so if that, yeah, at this point, I think, I think the horizon should be six months. If we don't get a fifty one percent. Then as a township, we're gonna move on. Of course, if there's some really motivated individual goes out and gets petitions at fifty one percent thereafter. And wants to bring it to our board, they can, but we're not, not gonna spend township time and resources on that anymore.
Works for me.
That makes sense?
Uncomfortable.
Michelle, do you have a sense, I, I know a lot of homes have turned over there, if, a lot of those have been bought up by one of those big property management outfits? Are they single fam- single family turnover?
Sure rental properties. I don't know if that trend is still trending or.
The last time I checked, roughly, it, just the entire Amelia area was somewhere between twenty-eight percent. And thirty percent were rental units. And that said, another case in point. Eddie, you were the one who went and knocked on the doors of the, of the national, many of the national companies. That had purchased those rental properties and asked them to sign the petition. So, you know, that, that was a step that the township pursued on their own, um, to be part of the, you know, part of this, this process.
Think I'm ungrateful. I am, I'm very.
No, it's, it's not that.
Not at all.
Everything that's been done since the dissolve was ever spoke of. But I, there are, there is a whole group of new people there now who think it's very dark. They don't know the backstory.
Right.
They don't know that they, they have a chance to get these lights back on. They don't have a clue.
Right. But in our case, you can understand, you know, we've been pushing this for four, we've had this out there for four years. There comes a point when it has to stop. We can't move forward.
Question for Eddie or, or our council. Um, let's say there's a street, you know, in that, within that neighborhood. That really, really strongly feels they want streetlights. Can they, uh, set themselves apart? And organize a lighting district, let's just say for South Ridge or whatever. Can they petition us for that? Or is there a minimum number of properties that have to be involved in order to create that lighting district?
I believe it's a minimum number of properties.
Statutory boundaries.
Okay.
It has to be a certain, um, property level and has to be certain length square footage, stuff like that. So it could not be just one street of people typically.
Okay, so if a segment, let's say, that met those criteria segment of the neighborhood felt very strongly about it, then if they met these. Got it. Okay, okay. So that's another option conceivably. If there's a big part of the neighborhood that does want it. If they meet the statutory requirements, maybe that's an option.
That, um, that information would be nice to, to know as well. How, how much, how many properties or acreage or. Miles or whatever, how it's measured, that would be nice to know. So if I'm looking at one street or five streets.
Right, Eddie can work on that, help you out with that.
Yeah, just any kind of information like that.
Yeah.
I wanna say that there's a decent amount of information on our website regarding elect, the electrical. It should be.
I think so.
Then I'll, I'll go back.
We're gonna revisit this. We'll look into all this information, make sure you got it. Thank you, Michelle. All right, sorry to derail us. That was my fault. I thought it was a topic worth diving into a little bit. Now moving on. Uh, let's see. Joe, do you wanna go ahead and, uh, do your presentation for the energy aggregation since you're a prominent topic? Of lights and whatnot.
All right, thank you. Um, so earlier today, I emailed, um, Eddie. And then also the board members individually, all the documents I'm gonna discuss here. So if you do have questions, I. Ask for you to reach out to me in that way. We can save some time here. Uh, one of the documents that you guys have is a savings analysis. Um, what that shows is the number of people that have, uh. Participated in the electric aggregation program since we started that. It's not complete yet, but up until this point in time. Uh, and that is showing a cumulative, uh, savings of almost one point eight million dollars. So the people that have participated in the program in the community versus if they were at the utility, it's a collective one point eight million. That has been helped by, uh, increases at the utility rate level, which has been, um. You know, it was just good ti- not good timing, but, um, rates are going up and they went up and our price was, you know, was down. And that, that created a larger spread. Um, the other document you have is what we call our LOA. It's something you've signed before. It allows us to make filings at the PUCO on your behalf, which is quarterly, the annual reports that are due. Every two years, there's a recertification that we pay for. Um, we like to have that form signed yearly. It just gives us authority. So when we send those in, they'll say, we're to question and say, well, how can you say this? Cause they simply, it also allows us to get data. So when we look at going out for bids. One of the things you have to provide to the suppliers that they wanna see is low data. And this allows us to, to capture that low data. That's gonna be very important, uh, for us to have that ahead of time. Uh, just from a timing standpoint, which I'll, which I'll touch on next, because we need to get that data before you go to the market. Okay, so, and that takes some time. We're gonna have really hard truth. Um, the other one is the addendum. It's an addendum to the master agreement that we have. And what it does is it sets a guideline to let us purchase power, which is what, what we did last time. It is a, a limited scope. Uh, it's not an ever-ending. It has a daylight. We have it in there as June of twenty-five, but of course, we have to, we have to act before that. Um. So we would like to get that approved and back as soon as possible. Um, a couple of things, um. You know, this is all done on market, right? Just like the stock markets, come on. So there's no magic on. As an example, in twenty twenty-three, in February of twenty twenty-three. Tuesday, February twenty-first was the cheapest day in February of twenty-three to purchase. It's not a day township net. That was the day, if you purchased that day, you were getting, you got the best price. I also happen to be coinciding with, it's the cheapest price of the year. But governments, you know, you, you meet on certain days. So that's one of the reasons. And then March, it was, uh, Wednesday, the first, Thursday, uh, March first, April, Monday, uh, four, three. Twenty-four was February fourteenth, March first and February thirtieth. And the farther out you went, actually, the more the price was, but that was just the cheapest day of that month. And the point that I'm making is, we really need to be in a position to act when the price is low. Versus being in a position to act only when you have a meeting, because that may not be the best day to act. Uh, and that's what we did last time. So we're not asking for anything different. The third thing that you have is, um, this document, and this is what maybe your partner, this is new. But I got the thinking that, you know, we are asking, uh, in that addendum, to do three years. The first year, the lettuce purchase at nine point two or less. That doesn't mean we will purchase at nine point two. It means that's up to, my guess is it'll be something in the eights. And you might say, well, wait a second, we're only on the sixes now. Yes, but the markets have moved up. They're up. The utility in this document will show you how the utility price works. The, there's doc, there's multiple things that go in. There's, um, the actual market price. And what you see on the left-hand side is the actual auctions. Duke has not had their auction. Uh, this, for this upcoming year, it's gonna be in March, which we don't wanna wait until then because we can miss opportunity. We have a very, pretty good idea of where it's gonna fall and those are the estimates and the actual estimates we are using, just so you know, are probably low. What you see there is a capacity charge, that's known. That's not changing. That's going to happen. And if you look at that compared to previous years, it is a huge increase, but we only, and so years two and three. We wanna fix the energy purchase, but make the capacity variable. The reason for that is the capacity is a pass-through. Whatever it is, whatever the formula ends up being. And that, what it settles at comes through. There's no markup, there's no nothing. It just gets added to it. We don't wanna fix that because we think it's gonna go down. We don't think it's gonna go back to the level that it's previously at. But we think it might go down a little bit and we wanna take advantage of it. We don't think it's gonna go much higher. We were not mindful, mindful. It's huge. The unit of purchase went from twenty-eight to two hundred and seventy-seven. In Virginia, it went to four eighty.
Wow.
So we don't think it's gonna go up much more. So that's why for years two and three. I, and I also think that we will see a bigger savings in year two than we did in year one and potentially in year three. And that's why we wanna do that. The, we are, we are pushing the edge of available generation and that's making it more, uh, more expensive. Um, last thing is, you know, we, we again are, uh. One of the larger, one of the bigger, um, partners with the OTA on the upcoming OTA conference. We are having an event which we passed out. So if anybody is up there, Wednesday evening, please come see us. Um, that, that's about as quick as I can do it, but I would like to get that LOA potentially and the, that addendum, the sooner I can get it, the better.
So Joe, uh, plainly speaking, I mean, what are, what are you asking? What, 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 what is our board approval gonna consist of? Are we gonna give you the right to go out and negotiate a contract? On behalf of the township for a certain amount of years or a certain, not to.
So the addendum says, it's a, it's, it's for the next year. So for the, for a twelve-month period after the, your current program expires. The following twelve months to do a price, a fixed price of less than point zero nine two cents. Year two and three, okay, months thirteen through twenty-four and then twenty-five through thirty-six. To fix the generation portion only at point oh seven or less. And then plus whatever the capacity at that time is, will get added to that and that'll be the price. That requires notification to the public. So it's not like it will change with customers.
So thirty-six months is the, 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 the amount of time we're authorizing you to negotiate a rate.
Yes.
Three years. Is that correct?
Yes.
That was the essence of my question.
Okay.
Okay, well, I mean.
But I just wanted you to say, it's not, we're not saying one price for three years.
Okay, I gotcha. It's.
But the reason we're doing that is our, the anticipation, when you look at the future markets right now, they're, they're going sky. But we only do twelve months, which we could do, but next year, price, we're, our, the fear is the price is gonna be even worse. It's gonna get even worse. We are running out of generation.
I got you. I just, I just wanted to understand what, what you were professing.
So what we're asking, what, what we're asking is for, let's go out and get some for you for three years.
Okay.
So it's extending the terms of our current contract? And that, that's what I don't understand.
Email me the doc.
Yeah, Eddie has. Um, it's last year, what we did is we have an, an energy management agreement. And what this is, is it's a, it's an addendum to that that says, it gives us the authority under a certain price point to purchase. And the reason we're doing that is because we've put a bunch of groups together, right? And the markets are, they move, if I got a price today, it won't be good tomorrow. So the only way we can put you all together and the only way is the price is best three days from now. The only way I can buy that is to have free approval to do so. And so the addendum gives us, but it's not, it's not open-ended, right? There's a, so that we can't just, you know, we can't just do this three years and then do it again because, well, we have this addendum. But it gives us the ability. This is how you're getting the best pricing in, in the marketplace.
I, I think that the missing ingredient here is, is that we did this last year. And so we went out, we allowed them to do that.
The documents of last year, this.
Yeah, I, I think that this is the same thing, just trying to lock it in. It allows them to say, look, we, we can get it at, you know. S- six, you know, whatever the number is on that day, they can lock it in and we get it locked in at a good rate. The last time we did this, we did not lock in at the, at an optimal rate. And our neighbors around us did far better than we did, because we weren't ready to lock in. So we went out with what, six, six, nine?
Yeah, your neighbors got a little bit over a half cent better. And it was just, there, there was a delay in approving us to do this.
Mm-hmm. So he's actually just asking us to do this earlier than we did the last.
That, so, so yes, so I'm back here now.
We have a November meeting. We have a November.
I did not, I did not.
We have all these meetings that you just come to at any point.
But I don't have, I didn't have the information there.
Okay. The industry puts out. No, I, I haven't said that. I, I was curious as to the range, the range in which we were gonna sort of lock in this agreement. I was most curious about the three-year thing.
There just seemed to be some confusion on, on that end that I wanted to clear up, that this isn't unusual.
That is.
Just doing.
The, the.
No, yeah, no, you're right. You're right.
For the next five years, we're gonna see climbing prices.
And I don't think any.
And like I said, you, I'm happy to take a phone call because, you know, let's, we really wanna get into that tonight, but I'm just, they're, they're going. What's that?
When does our current contract expire?
Uh, I think the one, oh, one we have, which I. Uh, I think the one, oh, one we have, which I want to address what you brought up earlier. The contract we had runs through the end of June with, it was with Energy Harbor. The reason letters went out is that do uh Denergy bought Energy. So nothing really changed, but the P C O requires, because what was going to happen is on everybody's bill, instead of saying Energy Harbor, it's going to say Denergy. Right? Then it changed, term didn't change. So that's why it lasts.
So our contract with Dynage ends in June?
Yes.
Okay, and if we agree to this request, are we extending the entirety of the contract? Or just your ability to negotiate for a
It picks up where this one stops.
And then we we are to clarify what I think you're asking. We are uh giving him permission to negotiate on our behalf, right? We're not extending any contracts.
That that's what I want to understand.
We're not extending.
Yeah, we're giving Joe permission to negotiate on our behalf with multiple seaters.
Yeah, that I'm I'm that part I'm okay with. I just want to make sure.
If Denergy win it again, sure, they could, but we don't know that. But it won't, it won't. It won't change the price that people are paying. Now, that will run out through June. But there has to be something that happens next. Keep in mind, the utility's prices will change, will go into effect June first. And that sheet I gave you shows you it's going to be close to ten cents. And that's not a number I'm pulling out of the air. That's why I gave you that sheet. It shows you there's actual numbers and events that are behind that, and that's going to happen.
So so correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially we're sort of making a gamble. We sort of like find futures and stuff, right? And you're kind of saying, well, this is where I think something's going to go. You're going to lock in at a certain price. You're going to make an educated guess. And you're also going to use the buying power of a bunch of people all at once. So as an individual, you wouldn't have about buying power from an energy company that we have as a township. So it allows you to negotiate a better rate with a certain provider and hopefully get that rate down and lock in at a certain price that's advantageous for everybody. And that's kind of how it works. Now, the voters voted on it. They want the aggregation, but to be sure, you don't have to be a part of this. Anyone can opt out at any time. This isn't something that's mandated on anybody. If they want to opt out of this program and go get their um energy directly from Duke or whomever. Nothing prohibits that, right?
And they can come back in. So they can leave. And then they can come back. They don't have to do it just at a certain time. So eight months down in the road, they say, well, geez. And I think we'll see a lot of that, quite honestly, in year two, year three, the price, I think the prices in the marketplace are going to be so uh inflated. And you'll see people who have contracts maybe that run through a certain period. And they go out and look to see, well, can I do better? Well, they won't be able to. Because we're getting that now at the market, the market goes up, they will be able to enter. So they could opt out. Following month or the following year, they can opt in and it costs them no additional fees. So yes, that's the benefit. And the benefit to it is when you can opt out and there's no, there's no penalty for doing something. So assuming we were wrong.
Right.
And it would be upside down. They could leave and go do whatever they want to do. I can't stress enough how much I think that's not going to be the case, but
Right, but it's, I mean
But if, if, if
I just want to, I just want to underscore that. It's been a while since we visited it and since
They have the ability to go wherever they want. This is a choice that they have. It's an additional choice available to them as being resident of the township. But that does not eliminate any other choices they have.
Are we being asked to do this tonight?
No, I came early so that we would I would like to see it before your February, by your February meeting.
Well, that gives our attorney time to review.
Won't be heavy lifting.
Okay. Feel better if she had a look at that. Thank you.
So yeah, that's why I wanted to get here to the and I was trying to come. I actually called. Maybe I'll come December. I didn't. We didn't have some of the information.
Okay.
So the documents that I sent you that I emailed you. It has everything, and that's why if if you're, if you're questioning it, call me so I can walk you through. Because it isn't a what I think. This is based on fact. This is based on things that have been reported that the general public doesn't realize that when the utility goes to an auction, how that's done. And there's reporting that says this is the result of that. And then we have the history, which is on here to show you. Look, last time this is, yeah, so it's, it's, it's not a number I'm just pulling out of the sky.
We always appreciate it. We think you do it. You provide the information. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Do we need to direct anybody to do anything?
I don't think so. Are you going to put on the, get us all the info for the February meeting perhaps? For our February meeting?
You have.
Yeah, well, you're going to get the internal a little more information.
Well, I can send it or you can. The other thing is don't forget that LOA. Now, if that you wanted to pass tonight, you could do, or if you want to do it on February, that's fine. But that is again, that if you wanted to do it tonight, it'd be great because that allows us to do some of, you know, assuming you pass in February. I can already have the data and have it processed. So it does take time to prepare these things to send them out. And I I have it now anyways, so in theory I could, I can do it. That's just the updated file. We like to keep it yearly.
Okay.
So in theory, yes, it won't hold us up. So yeah, do it in February.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Yep.
All right. Any other comment on that? Okay, uh, I think we're on to new business. Debbie.
I I sent out the temporary appropriations and I request a motion to approve them.
So moved second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Um, I request a motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month. That needs to be changed as amended for December um in twenty five or twenty four in the amount of five hundred and four five hundred and four thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars and thirty three cents.
Uh moved as amended to reflect December as the date.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
I request a motion uh for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of December as amended in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty four, eighty cents.
So so moved with amendment.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
I approve uh request a motion to approve the payment to Otama Insurance in the amount of a hundred and sixty two thousand, three hundred and fifty three dollars.
Don't move. Seconded.
Motion a second discussion. Roll call.
Um, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And I request a motion to approve Baston and Company LLC to perform our year-end annual financial report. And that's who we used last year since I couldn't use Kelly.
Don't move.
Have a motion or have a second?
Wow. Seconded.
My sister's accounting firm.
We got a motion in a second.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. And I wanted to let you know the difference. Um, the request Otama went up from a hundred and thirty one thousand to a hundred and sixty two.
Okay, thank you.
We reach out to them as well for some more clarification on what all that encompasses. So we're just waiting for response back.
He's waiting for you.
We've been going back and forth. They're kind of running us through our different contacts on what's going on too.
All right.
Just get on it, Dave. Come on, man.
Chief, right.
I request a motion to accept the resignation of part-time firefighter E N T Cassie Kelly effective December thirty first, two thousand twenty four.
Don't move. Seconded.
Motion a second roll call.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I request, I request a motion to approve the temporary promotion of Jake Ober to mechanic at the established rate of thirty one ninety three, starting on January fifth of twenty twenty five through January eighteenth. But that's not right. Um, that should be longer than January.
It's the payroll period.
Huh?
Starting on that payroll period.
Okay, all right. Until Dave Schneider returns, he's off for surgery and he's going to be off for quite a while.
Just amend it, John. What do you want to amend it to?
Uh, it's, it's good. It's, I was thinking that it was from January fifth to the eighteenth. But that was just the payroll period.
Starting that payroll period.
Until he returns from his surgery.
Got it. Roger.
Don't move. Seconded.
Motion a second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
All right. Uh, Eddie.
Uh, I request a motion to hire Ms. Terry Ogden for the planning and zoning assistant position contingent upon satisfactory completion of pre-employment screening and background check. We got those in today, so she's good to go and her tentative start date is January the thirteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes. All right. Old business, Debbie. Do you have anything? You're going to slide in here. Oh, my gosh. Public comment, open floor discussion. Joe, we already covered you. You can come back up. No, I'm just kidding.
He will. Move on, move on.
Put me in, coach. Yeah, I know. All right, anybody else? Any other public comment? Okay. All right, um, the last on the agenda here is going to be executive session. Uh we have a few items here to discuss an executive session and I'll throw those motions forward in a second. I cannot, I don't think it's likely we take action outside of this executive session, but I can't guarantee that we don't. So anyone who's going to want to stick around is welcome to. Um, but I need a motion to adjourn an executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section one two one point two two G one to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion a second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, and I need a motion to adjourn an executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section one two one point two two G eight to discuss confidential information related to an economic development prospect.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion a second discussion. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Motion to enter an executive session pursuant to R C one two one point two two G four for the purpose of preparing, conducting, and reviewing bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation and other considerations of their employment. So a motion.
Don't move. Seconded.
Motion a second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes. We will enter into executive session. We will be back.
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Still moved.
Executive.
Discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And do I have a motion to enter back into regular session?
Still moved. Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kamal?
Yes.
Yes. And I don't think we're going to take any action. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Executive.
Motion to second, discussion, roll call.
Wait, I had some discussion on that.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, you did.
What's your discussion?
Called my bluff. I didn't have any.
I'm interested to hear.
Okay.
I'm on the edge of my seat right now.
I changed my mind. Let's adjourn, okay?
Yes.
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 All right.
Okay.
Next meeting, January, February meeting, January fifteenth, January fifteenth, okay? All right.
I'll try to remember it.